Okay, it's officially 9:30. We'll call the meeting to order and we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. And if the clerk could take the roll, please?
Commissioner Look.
Here.
Commissioner Brassad.
Here.
Commissioner Cordyak.
Here.
Commissioner Severota.
Here.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
The first item is review of checks issued from Finance and Central Services and from Human Services. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Then we have the approval of our minutes from our August 28th County Board Meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
Oh.
There a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Look. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. We have two items under Chair's remarks today, and the first one is to recognize October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Anoka County. Despite all that has been done over the years, domestic and sexual violence continues to have an impact in our community. Last year, at least 24 people died in Minnesota from domestic violence, including 19 women who died by homicide at the hands of a current or former domestic partner. In Anoka County, we're working very hard to raise awareness about this important issue as we have for many years. We're honored to have with us today representatives from two area organizations who are leading advocates for survivors in Anoka County. I'd like to invite Connie Moore, Executive Director of Alexandra House, and Linda Wiesa, Executive Director of The Dwelling Place, to come up and say a few words about their efforts. Welcome.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Thank you so much for having us here today and for your support and understanding of the issue of domestic violence in Anoka County and sexual assault. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and every year we have an event whereby we invite the community to come and join us in learning more about domestic violence and how they can be involved. But I want to give you a little information about what we've been doing this past year. Our mission is to empower victims of domestic and sexual violence and inspire social change through education, support, and advocacy. We provide a 24-hour emergency shelter, and this past year we served 567 victims, survivors, and their children with 11,042 nights of safety. We received almost 5,000 calls on our 24-hour helpline as well. Our on-call hospital advocacy provides crisis intervention, safety, and planning and support for victims of domestic and sexual violence. We respond 24/7 to both Mercy Hospital and Unity Campus. In 2017, 256 victims of sexual and domestic violence received crisis intervention, safety planning, and support at local hospitals and clinics. We also provide therapy and support services which are free and confidential to individuals as well as families. We work with children as well through our therapy program. In 2017, 216 victims, survivors, and their children began their healing process by attending our weekly support groups or going through our ongoing therapy, which was provided to 35 adult children and youth. Ooh. Don't know what I did there. Let's see. I'm gonna go back. I got you up there, Al. Sorry. Not sure how to do this. Well, I'm gonna grab my thing.
Can you get it?
I don't know if any... I don't know how to fix this. Well, there we go.
You're calling.
Is it calling? Yep. Oop. Okay. Well, that's the first time I've done that. All right. I'm sorry. We also provide legal advocacy services which include providing either low-cost or free family law referrals. In 2017, we worked with over 750 clients and working... supporting them through the Civil and Criminal Court system, which included assistance in filing protection orders, support during civil and criminal court proceedings, and legal representation. We received 572 referrals from local law enforcement as a result of our lethality assessment program. Our lethality assessment program screens onsite at a domestic assault call to determine whether or not the victim is at high risk for further injury or death. So through that program, we had 572 referrals. 314 high-risk victims were immediately connected to an advocate, which is critical because one of the things that they found is that victims who have ended up being killed by their abuser, over 60% of those victims did not have any connection at all with a program like Alexandra House to help them kind of walk through a process that might help keep them safe. We also provide follow-up services. So after that initial crisis and things have settled down a little bit, we work with families, providing in-home advocacy and support. So we work with them on getting back into employment if they have not... if they're not in a job or education, job training, working with them and getting their children hooked up with services that they need. So whatever that family is in need of, we work with them and trying to connect them with those resources in the community. And last year, we worked intensely with 129 families through that program. Our Aging Services Program also provides the 24-hour crisis line, support, safety planning, and assistance. And these services are available to individuals 50... I know 50 seems young, doesn't it? It doesn't seem right. That's the national standard in terms of looking at resources that are available for individuals once they set that age at 50, because there's a lot of services that aren't available to individuals in that age group. So we're working with a lot of folks who are dealing with not... we're not just intimate partner violence, but family. So adult children, nephews, aunts, you know, whoever. There's a lot of issues going on in the older population that I think we're just seeing the tip of. So those services have... we've been providing since... for about three, four years now. We served 39 older adults through that program in 2017. Our Youth Services Program provides one-on-one intervention, support groups, and educational prevention programming to young people in and throughout Anoka County schools. In 2017, over 1,200 children, youth, and parents were touched through school-based one-on-one advocacy support groups, onsite groups at Lino Juvenile Correctional Facility. Almost 4,000 students learned about healthy relationships through our classroom presentations. We also provide community education and professional training, and these are provided through informal presentations, community outreach, professional trainings to others who might be working with survivors of sexual or domestic violence. In 2017, 7,383 community members increased their awareness and knowledge through community education, presentations, professional trainings, and community events. One of the other things I'd really like to stress is we have lots of volunteer opportunities. So you can work in our shelter, working with the women and children staying in the shelter. We have on-call hospital advocacy opportunities, childcare volunteers, kitchen and facility volunteers, group opportunities, and special events. So if you're interested in getting involved and learning more, please contact us. We can always use your help. And this year, we are having... we've renamed our Walk for Hope to Hope Fest. We've extended the time on it. We're adding more activities. We have a Kids Zone this year and a Kids Dash, and we're partnering with the YWC in making that happen. So we're excited. We've got a lot of new partners this year, so encouraging folks to attend that event, get involved. It should be fun. It's gonna be a new experience this year, so we invite everybody to attend and hope that you can make it. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie.
Thank you again for inviting me. My name is Linda Wiesa. I'm the Director of The Dwelling Place. The Dwelling Place is a Christian ministry that supports women and children who are victims of abuse through supportive services and programs and a safe place to call home. We exist to break the generational cycle of abuse by equipping and empowering women through the love of Jesus Christ so that they can experience lasting freedom. Having fun here. Well, we'll try this. There we go. As Connie mentioned a lot about abuse, we partner highly with them, and quite often, women and children come to us from the Alexandra House or other shorter-term shelters in the community. We have long-term transitional housing, 12 to 18 months, which allows women and children to get back on their feet. And we have very often a picture in our mind about women being victims of abuse, but of course, children are victims as well. And so we have a high focus on the children in our programs, helping them gain cognitive skills that they may be behind in school from the trauma of abuse, emotional... process their emotions, learn coping skills, and better behavioral skills. This is a picture of our homes, just to give you an idea. Very nice, neat, clean. Women and their children have their own private bedroom or bedrooms, depending on the number of children. And then they have community living space in the kitchens, living area, and laundry where approximately three families share. So we have multiple homes in a similar location that allow us to create our programming in one of those locations so everyone gathers together. Just a little bit of a glimpse of our children's spaces and some of the activities that we do there. We're really excited because we're growing our capacity. We recently were able to purchase a duplex and renovate that through the generosity of several individuals and church organizations, and our current capacity is 42 women and children. We're also in the process of renovating now a fourth duplex, and by early next year, we will be able to serve 52 women and children at one time. We also have an event in October, definitely working with the Domestic Violence Appreciation or Awareness Month. Whoops. There we go. Our gala is October 6th at Earl Brown Center, and you can find information on our website, thedwellingplacelaboratoryshelter.org/gala2018. We'd love to have you. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you again for coming, Connie and Linda, and for your work that you do within the community in serving those who have experienced domestic and sexual violence. For our viewing audience, I would like to encourage everyone to, again, visit the websites listed on the screen for more information about the upcoming fundraising events and encourage you to go out and get involved. Wonderful opportunities for some amazing organizations within our community. So at this time, I'd like to ask my fellow Commissioners to join me in supporting Resolution 2018-120, proclaiming October 2018 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Anoka County. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, and everyone remember to wear purple on Thursday, October 25th to show your support and awareness of this very important issue. It's the perfect timing because we're on to recognize an Anoka County resident who won a big award. And an award, I understand, that has not been awarded to an Anoka County resident since the early 1960s, which is a long time ago. Commissioner Brassad, please provide a little background and introduce our very special guest this morning.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we have a celebrity in the house. Al Santarude of Ham Lake is a living legend and now has the title to prove it. Recently, the State Fair honored Al as Minnesota's 2018 Outstanding Senior Citizen, but it's something we've known for years. I was actually at the fair, watching the parade that day, when I'm watching the bands go by and other groups go by, and all of a sudden, I see one of my neighbors, Al, sitting on this float going by. So I was waving and jumping, trying to get his attention, and he was focused. There was a lot of people there, but it was so exciting to actually be there and see him in that parade. Well, according to the rules of the application, applicants must be at least 70 years old and are judged on many things. How the person has touched the lives of others in the community, the quantity of accomplishments, and amount of service after the age 65. Al was nominated by Chris Niebler of Coon Rapids, from the Coon Rapids Senior Center, who is also here today. I'm very thankful for Chris for taking the time to nominate Al. All 87 counties in Minnesota nominate a female and a male, so this is quite a win and a big honor. At 94 years young, Al is heavily involved in volunteering and always has been, from local civic tasks in Ham Lake to global projects in Africa. But it's his work helping the nonprofit Bike for Kids that he's best known for. Bikes for Kids provides bikes and helmets to children and adults who are in need. Old and used bikes are collected and refurbished at Al's Ham Lake Farm. Last year, more than 2,000 bikes were given new life and then given away. In fact, I can tell you, his place has kind of turned into a bike factory with dozens of dedicated volunteers who not only collect, fix, and distribute bikes, but also market, recruit, and fundraise, all overseen by Al. Before retiring, Al was a CPA. He co-founded Santarude, Savarice, and Associates. He was also a manager for Mercy Hospital, Golden Valley Lutheran College, Glenwood-Inglewood, and Archer Daniels. I could go on and on, but I think we'd like to hear from the man himself. Al, congratulations on your award, and please tell us more about your whirlwind experience at the fair and more about Bikes for Kids. Please.
Not sure where to start. Thank you for inviting me. Thank you for Julie. Thank you for all that you have said. It brings back the tears that we're at this State Fair, and I'm sorry. Bikes for Kids. It is our mission. It is the mission of all of us to reach out and serve those in need. No question. It's that simple. Secondly, we are in need of volunteers. Let me just restate that one again. We are in need of volunteers. Why do I say such a statement as my beginning introduction? Simple. Just some numbers to give you a little bit of insight. In 2011, we gave away 125 bicycles to people in need. In 2017, we took in 2,800 bicycles, of which 1,018 were repaired mechanically sound bicycles. In that same year, we gave away, out of that 1,018 that we repaired, 868 to individuals and adults in need of bicycles. Now, let's stop at that number just a little bit. I can look around. Everyone that's up there, everyone who's out here and in our youth, I don't think a bicycle was a problem in our lifetime. Some of the thank yous that we get, it makes me cry. A bicycle did that for you? Hallelujah! Bikes for Kids, I said we took in 2,800. That was the number that we reached this year on October... on March 30th, or not March, August 30th. As of this Saturday, last Saturday, we are now at 2,800 taken in. What is our anticipated number to give away this year? We are moving along very rapidly. Our anticipated giving away to those in need will be 1,200 repaired bikes. Oh, yes. I haven't mentioned another little side thing that we do. We also send repairable bikes to Gambia, West Africa. Last year, just, I think they told me it was 1,200 bikes that we sent over there. What do they do with them? The same thing as we do. They repair them and give them away. All of the 20 inches go to kids who walk, have to walk to school. They also give the larger bikes to teachers. But anybody else that needs a bike must repair it. But also, along with it, they teach them how to repair bicycles. A side note that I picked up is that some people walk 20 miles when they hear that a seagoing container is coming in with bicycles, and they want to see if they can get a bicycle. Thank you for this opportunity.
Well, thank you, Al, for joining us today. It really is heartwarming to hear about the reach that Bikes for Kids has, the reaching all the way to Africa and locally, it's truly amazing what your group has done. It's an honor to recognize you for winning the statewide award and really representing Anoka County so well. Thank you, all.
Al, we are so incredibly proud of you and all of your accomplishments and really of your entire team who is here with you today and all the many volunteers, and I know you need more. So again, thank you so much for all that you have done in the community, not only with this organization, but as Julie mentioned, so many others. I know that our... the first time I met you was when you came after I was first elected and asked if I would get involved with Free to Be that then became Cars for Neighbors. So you have been somebody who has really helped to start some amazing organizations with the with this, within this community. So again, thank you so much for your incredible service to all those in our community.
We appreciate it. [applause]
I have one more statement, please. Memory was just a little bit short on, and that is, here is Bikes for Kids. All of you. Thank you. All of you.
You know, I just have to comment that today, as I was driving in here, I looked up and across the Main Street overpass, there was the Coon Rapids Fire Department proudly displaying our flag with those standing and waving with signs that say "Never Forget." And it has been 17 years since our country was attacked in a cowardly act of terrorism. And I just think, you know, with everything going on in this world today, really in honor of the many who lost their lives on that day, may we take time to remember the sense of unity we had in this country, the sense of pride we felt, and just that sense of patriotism, and really that sense of caring and compassion for our neighbors. I think that is the way that we can best honor their memory today. So with that, we will move on to committee reports, and we'll start off with Management Committee. Commissioner West.
Got a little emotional. Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one action item, and that is a restructuring replacement in administration and facilities, management, and construction. It's effective today due to a retirement, and the restructure is one FTE custodial aide being restructured to one associate space planner, grade B-010.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak?
Aye.
Commissioner Sevaraja?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you. Now, we will move on to Intergovernmental Committee Relations Committee Chair Report. So I'm bringing forward one item as we did not meet. The chair recommends the county board adopt Resolution IG 2018 dash O2, a resolution accepting funds from the State of Minnesota Department of Veterans Affairs for the County Veteran Service Officer Enhancement Grant Program. And, you know, in the past, we would, we received maybe $7,500, but according to their records, we have over 23,000 veterans living in Anoka County, which qualifies us for an additional $15,000. So the grant fund total is 22,500. So I'll offer that resolution. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Cordiak?
Aye.
Commissioner Sevaraja?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Motion carries. And that concludes my report. Now, we'll move on to Parks and Community Services Committee Report. Commissioner Cordiak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are a couple items I carried over from our last meeting. One of them is regarding approval of some parks-related projects. They are all on a capital improvements plan. They have been approved, pre-approved by the state of Minnesota. We're looking at accepting those grants and moving forward. As you might see, one of them is $230,000 for Lake George Regional Park, $687,000 for the Rice Creek Chain Lakes Reserve, and $325,000 for an Islands of Peace rehab project, and we seek permission and approval to move those items forward. All moving.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Sevaraja?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Secondarily, we recognize a need at the Lake George Dam. There was a dam-related issue. This is an old and aging structure. It had its problems. It was historic. We desired to seek some replacement. Weren't sure if we're going to be able to successfully accomplish that, but working with Lassard Sams, uh, 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 or Heritage Group, we did seek approval on that dam reconstruction project and two riverbank area restabilizations on the Rum River. We're pleased to have it awarded and granted those. They're in the amount of $539,000. We will move forward with projects next year, as I recall was the discussion, and we're anxious to approve these projects and glad that we were recognized by that organization for that support.
Madam Chair, we'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
I just want to publicly thank Jeff and his team for the presentation they made down at the Lassard Sams. We combined this project with, well, there are two projects combined, the riverbank stabilization and the repair of the dam. On mine, folks, that I think it was 30, was it number 30 on the DNR list or somewhere in that neighborhood, for dams needing replacement, of which they didn't have enough money for the first one on the list. So the likelihood of getting this done was, was not good. And the dam was already failing. If it completely failed, everyone on Lake George would have gotten a lot more lakeshore. The fishery would have been completely destroyed out there, and of course, we have 400,000-some visitors annually that probably wouldn't have wanted to go and visit the park anymore. So it was important to us, and there were some key people, I think, that helped to get this across the finish line, certainly those that presented, but also Ron Shera was a big advocate of this project, as well as Senator Andrew Lang, who does not represent our area, but is a friend of mine, close personal friend, and understood our project and trusted the request and advocated on our behalf. So while there are many, many people that worked to get this accomplished, I think that we have an opportunity here to save the dam, to stabilize the river, and it's dollars, public dollars that are being put to good use, so.
Thank you, Commissioner.
May I say further, Madam Chair, that really Matt has a strong hand in moving that item along. I appreciate his fervor, because I think it was his understanding of the nature of problem and his guidance and direction that helped us to push it forward, heading on. I don't know where we'd be with that project today. Thank you.
All right. Roll call vote.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak?
Aye.
Commissioner Sevaraja?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item.
And not to run over our Parks Director, I'd like, but could you, Jeff, comment about item number three, another stabilization project?
Certainly. Madam Chair, members of the board, good morning. My name is Jeff Perry. I'm the Park Director for Anoka County. Over the past three years, the Anoka County Parks Department has been working cooperatively with the Anoka Conservation District in securing various grant funds to design and construct a well-needed solution to repair a 300-foot section on the Rum River at Rum River Central Regional Park. With that said, a joint powers agreement is needed between the Anoka Conservation District and Anoka County that lays out an agreement for the design, construction, operations, and maintenance of this important riverbank stabilization project. The Anoka Conservation District has been a critically important partner for Anoka County on this project. They bring to the table a wealth of technical knowledge, as well as securing other state grant funds for this project. So we've done a number of projects in concert with the Conservation District over the years, and this is yet another fine example of pooling resources to get some good conservation work done here in Anoka County.
Is there a motion? Oh, Commissioner?
Well, we can move.
Okay.
I'll move.
You'll move it? Is there a second? All right. Further discussion?
If I can, Madam Chair, I might just comment. Look at this, this simple agenda here. I mean, look at us, working with the state of Minnesota Legacy Grants with Lassard Sams, with Conservation District. I mean, we are, we are a well-recognized park system, quite frankly. Between your predecessor and your own historic involvement in our park system, we're well thought of in the metropolitan area. We're successful so many, many times in our endeavors, and I think it's because we're just well-known to be engaged and active and participating with all of our partners, and I give you and your staff great credit for that because you brought in many dollars into Anoka County that might not have otherwise were not for your initiative. We're talking right now about Islands of Peace, and where that might go. So I thank you for your efforts. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak?
Aye.
Commissioner Sevaraja?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The other items are, I think, very straightforward, and that would conclude my report.
Thank you. Now, we will move on to Public Safety Committee Chair Report. Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would recommend that contract C-0006577, a professional services agreement with Justice Concepts, Inc., that was approved by the county board on July 24th, 2018, be reassigned to their partner company, RJS Justice Services LLC. And basically, what this does is just clears up which company we're working with that's going to be providing the county jail and workhouse needs assessment, which company is going to be carrying the liability insurance on this project.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak?
Right.
Commissioner Sevaraja?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next, we will move on to item number eight, consider approving contract C-0006742, a renewal of the proposed health care insurance package from Blue Cross Blue Shield for 30-hour or more per week benefit eligible positions of non-union and union employees for a one-year period starting January 1st, 2019, with an overall premium increase of 9.9%, with a premium cap for 2020 of 9.9%. And I want to say that I know that it was a lot of hard work and effort to get down to this 9.9%. They started off significantly higher, and if not for the hard work of Bill Keller, as well as our broker, in really showing Blue Cross Blue Shield the numbers and really putting pressure, I don't think that we would be at this point. So again, thank you for your incredible work in getting us to this point. And with that, I will move approval. Is there a second? Further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner?
I would just comment for those watching or listening that, you know, this is something we need to recognize and pay attention to, that, you know, 9.9% is a win this year, but it's still 10%. It's a big jump, and that money comes from somewhere. And so we have to pay attention to that. We have to recognize that this is not a one-year deal, that this is something that will happen again and again, and has happened in the past to not just our county, but any other county, or any other business for that matter. So we need to recognize that while we take this action today to accept these rates and allow our employees to take advantage of this program for their medical health benefits, but we need to recognize that property taxes will be affected by this this year and in years to come. And you can't hold the line flat year after year after year when you have these types of increases. And on top of these benefits, you start looking at, you know, average wage increases for employees who do a real good job for us, and pretty soon, you start to understand why property taxes inevitably will creep up. And I'm not saying that we're going to have a 10% property tax increase, because we won't, but I just want people to understand that as they watch county board meetings throughout the year, votes like this impact our final decision when it comes down to the levy.
Thank you, Commissioner. Great point, and, you know, 9.9%, although, yes, we're excited to have it down to this point, the alternative could have been 20%. And, you know, we continue to work hard and try to be creative, and really, it's about making sure that our employees are taking advantage of our wellness programs and living healthy, active lifestyles, because that is the only thing that will truly bring down our insurance rates overall. So. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak?
Right.
Commissioner Sevaraja?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is to consider approving contract C-0006741, the Proposed Retiree Medicare Supplemental Insurance Renewal Package with Blue Cross Blue Shield for Plan Year 2019. I would just note that this really is as a result of federal legislation that was passed a number of years ago. It was delayed, 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 and now, effective January 1st, federal legislation requires that some of the Medicare cost plans that we were able to offer before are now sunsetting. That's the Medicare Advantage Regional and some of the local coordinated plans. So we need to make this change, and again, a lot of work that went into trying to find a plan that would meet the needs of all of our retirees who have served this county so well. So with that, I will move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak?
Aye.
Commissioner Sevaraja?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there anything else to come before the county board?
We have an additional.
Oh, sorry. Yes, I almost missed that. Okay, we have an additional agenda item. And this is to consider authorizing the county attorney's office and risk management to settle claim 16 dash 560, and I will move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Cordiak?
Aye.
Commissioner Sevaraja?
Aye.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Look?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. And now, we are adjourned.